So, good evening, everybody. I would like to call to order, under the amended agenda, for the Lake Mills City Council, February 4th, 2020. And would you please call the roll?
Mr. Fields?
Here.
Mrs. Fritch?
Here.
Mr. Foster?
Here.
Mr. Fritch?
Here.
Mitch Schmidt?
Here.
Would all who are able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Are there any corrections and/or approval of the City Council minutes for January 21st, 2020? Anyone want to make a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion or anything of that nature? All right, call the roll.
Mrs. Fritch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritch?
Aye.
Mitch Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Past 5:00.
Okay. Item 5, correspondence. Does someone like to comment on correspondence?
I think we all got the same email.
I think we did.
Concerning EDC and... And I'm not sure how we want to address that, or where we want to go with that. I know it was sent to Steve. I sent it to Steve also, but I didn't send it to Misty for the record yet. Did anybody else send it to Misty?
No.
No.
All right, I'll get that sent to you.
Okay. So, we are dealing with that, and it's more of a housekeeping item at this point, I think. Weather interpretation.
Yeah, interpretation, yeah.
Okay. Any other correspondence on any other topic? Okay. Seeing none, move on to item 6, questions and public comment. The public is encouraged to address the council at this time regarding items on the agenda. Public comment may also be made at this time on items that are not on the agenda if you have registered with the city clerk before the meeting has been called to order. The state's open meeting law discourages action by the council on items not listed on the agenda. Please keep your comments limited to three minutes. State your name and address when starting your comments, and fill out the sign-in sheet provided on the podium. If there is anyone who would like to address the council, you may come up to the podium. And I don't see anybody here to address the council. So, given that, I will close public comment. All right, City Manager's Report. Steve?
I provided you the check register from December. I also have a note that Glenn Zastro, our representative on the Joint Rock Lake Committee, has informed me that he does not want to renew in April.
Okay.
So, we'll need to fill that position. I've provided you with a copy of City Manager's Report, so still, the city attorney has been working with a consultant for Johnson Creek on the intergovernmental agreement. We've talked about it with the fire department and are continuing to work on it. Had a very productive meeting last week with... About the medical directors and working with EMS. We still have to meet with the dispatch. There are going to be some documents drawn up and agreed to between EMS and the fire department, and then they'll put those to the county dispatch. Street permits. We've been working pretty hard on street permits. We've had issues again. You know, after 2008, it slowed down, but it's picked up again, where people are digging in our streets and leaving holes all over the place, or doing other types of activities in the street that damage it or are causing traffic hazards. And so, we're trying to put together a street permit that'll handle all of it. It's a little bit complicated, but we're working on it. You'd be surprised how many...
And you're actually digging into the pavement?
Oh, yeah. A lot of digging into the pavement.
Why?
Electric, telephone...
Oh, companies.
Cable.
I thought private people were doing this in front of their homes.
No, generally, it's not private. Generally, it's like...
A business of some sort.
Frontier.
Okay.
The main one is We Energies.
I was worried.
Sometimes it's like S&amp;S, or a plumber, or somebody like that working for somebody. But they'll, you know, sometimes they'll remove the sidewalk and a tree in the tree lawn. Sometimes they'll dig all the way across the street. We Energies is great at putting a hole about this big in the pavement. And then they hydro...
Excavate.
Excavate down to the utility that they're looking for, and then they pack a bag full of dirt, throw a little coal mix in it, and leave. Well, a year later, that baby is a nice hole, and they haven't filled it appropriately. So, we've looked at, you know, getting a print that makes sure that it takes care of that, and a lot of times, it's not actually We Energies, it's a contractor working for them.
Gotcha.
And so, but then we're getting things like landscapers doing landscaping jobs, and they stack dirt and gravel and wood chips and every other type of material that they have in one lane, and then they're using the Bobcat in the other lane to scoop it up and haul it into the... And no traffic control. Or you're putting pods out, or dumpsters, or... And they're putting them out, they're basically creating a traffic hazard and not taking care of it appropriately. So, this year, we had one person who said, "Yeah, I got a permit." And we asked everybody who could possibly have given him a permit, and nobody knew what he was talking about. And so, it was like, okay, he's already gone. Maybe we should make this a coordinated effort to make sure that we don't get this run through us again.
It's a good idea. It's sad that we have to go that route, but...
Yep. So, we're working on that. One of the things we're looking at is similar to what we do with the school district is, if you dig in a street that's a 1 through 3, the cost is lower than the cost would be if you dig in a street that's brand-new. So, you know, you might pay for the minimum amount of repair in a street that's got a lot of damage to it, which is a 1 through 3. If you're digging in a 10, you're going to pay the ultimate cost, and you're going to have to do a bigger repair, because we're going to make you do a larger excavation or a cut and then patches, so that it spreads across the trench better and you get a better depth. So, those are things that we're looking at that we'll be back with.
Are there permits and ordinances like that in other cities that we can avoid recreating the way?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we're not recreating anything.
I was going to say, because that's a lot of work to rewrite it fresh. But, okay, good. I'm glad to hear that.
We have... We've also taken the approach that we want to protect our trees more from them, so the forester gets a say in the permit. So, those are some of the things that we're trying to work through, and you'll see it before we finalize it. Which, South Main Street, we're planting... We're responsible for putting the trees back in.
Right.
We budgeted for that. Rob is in the process of purchasing the trees and writing an RFP to contract with someone to install the trees.
Are we buying a variety of tree... Trees, plural?
The first 90 trees are going to be basically eight types of trees. Because remember, we were sticking to trees that worked well in a very small tree lawn, which are generally short, not very heavy trees. So, we're not planting elms and oaks and maples. And then we wanted flowering trees.
Yeah.
Give that flowering look in the terrace. So, yes, we have a list that we've proposed so far, and there's not really a huge... I don't know. You buy trees that work in your zone and under the conditions that they're in. So, if you've got a narrow tree lawn, that's going to take a lot of salt, and the weather temperatures that we have here, it really starts to shrink down the number of trees types that you can use that cover that pattern. So, Rob's put together as many as he could find, so that he thought people around here would have.
Hmm.
He didn't want to have to go to Texas to buy a tree. So, those are... Public information meeting is coming up. It is on a Wednesday night.
What's the date for that? Do you know?
February 26th, from 4:30 to 6:30.
Public information meeting on what?
South Main Street.
Okay.
On the section from where they ended last year, which would be just south of Woodland Beach to the end of the roadway, which is just around the curve on the south end down there. Probably the main issues that are going to have to be dealt with are traffic in and out of Sandy Beach Road. Because during the first half of the construction, you're not going to go north. So, if you're on Sandy Beach Road, and you want to get to Lake Mills Market, you're going to go to County Highway S. You're going to go out A to County Highway S, and you're going to come up to B, and then you're going to come over to V and N. Okay? Because there's no other access. And same when it gets to the south end.
Couldn't they go down 89 and over to Mansfield Road and up Harvey Road?
Yes, you could. But if you were going to the market, that would be longer than going the other way.
Well, but...
You have either option.
Yeah, okay.
But you're not...
Just checking.
You know, if you're coming up Sandy Beach Road, and you want to get to the high school, it'd be faster to walk.
Mm-hmm.
Because you're going to have to drive all the way around.
But it is doable.
It is doable.
Just have to plan more time.
Right. That's the problem with having a mile-long road with only one access. So, we'll have to, you know, there's going to have to be a lot of information put out about that, and letting people know what the conditions are.
Where's it going to be held?
Here.
Downstairs. In the community center. Mulberry Street. They still haven't got all the change orders in. They're still working on those. One change order we did get back in was the delay that We Energies put into the project. So, we have invoiced them for $3,400, roughly $3,400, which was the delay that the contractor billed us for, because We Energies wasn't out of the way.
And if the grass that was planted very late doesn't come up, then there will be...
They're on the hook for that.
Those will be change orders too, because they're going to have to replant that.
No, that's a warranty item.
Oh, what?
A warranty item.
A warranty item. Oh, they'll do that on a warranty? Oh, okay. I guess that's fine. As long as it gets done.
The TAP... The TAP grant was submitted. That was the grant for sidewalks. We put in Tyranina Park Road on several locations, from where we stopped there at the cemetery down to the intercept... The driveway to the market there. Finishing up from on the north side, from where it ends there by the old Standish Plain Art property, all the way down to the end of the city. And then down by the park, from basically Topeka out to East Mills, then some areas in the city that still don't have sidewalks that are easy to fill in. And then south on Highway 89, all the way to St. Paul's. Those are some of the main ones that we put in there.
When will work on Mud Lake Road start for the subdivision on the south end? Are we looking like a year from now?
No, it'll be the summer.
Summer, okay.
Yeah.
Will that include sidewalk as well?
Yes.
Okay.
It'll include it on one side.
One side?
It'll...
The side that the subdivision is on?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
If development starts on the other side, we just make them do it as part of the home There would have to be some things that would be considered on the other side, but I've talked to the owner on the other side, and he's not quite ready yet. He's going to wait a couple of years before he looks at doing any construction out there.
Well, that's good, because there won't be anywhere to drive, because everybody'd be ripped up. Okay.
The Sandy Beach boat launch, that's on a schedule to be bid out here pretty shortly, so we'll probably see some construction plans coming through. The schedule we want to be on is after September 1st, and get the main part done then, and then have it finished up in the spring, probably the final paving all done in the spring, so that it's ready on Memorial Day in '21.
Uh-huh.
Tonight, the Sandy Beach Restaurant is on for the demolition. We have prepared a food truck RFP, and that'll be coming before you probably at your next Comprehensive outdoor recreation plan has been approved by the Parks Board, and we'll be on a schedule to go to the Plan Commission for their recommendation. Then it goes through two notices, and then it'll come to the City Council, so late March, early April, probably. Okay. I've talked to you about Christmas lights four times, probably. I haven't got it right once yet. So, let me start again.
Does it keep changing?
Well, Paul and I were speaking at a little bit different odds. We had talked originally about, could the lights on the commons handle them? And he checked, and yes, they can. They might need some modifications, but yes, they can. He was only talking about those. I thought he was talking about all of them. He was not. So, the ones on the west side of the street probably won't work, so I asked him about switching them out with the other ones, and he said, "It is possible, but because they don't have the same bases, it would be a very expensive project." So, that's something we'll have to look at. The Mangin Development is still moving forward. They are working on a couple of buildings now. We still have not approved their public infrastructure. So, they're... And they haven't asked us to. So, they're just... We're just hanging on to that bond, waiting for it. We have rejected some of their work and asked them to redo it. And I think that's one of the issues that's kind of holding them up. Mainly has to do with the lift station that serves the second half of the development.
Do we need to do any more development on the far end of it for fire safety in and out?
No, that's all in place.
That's good enough.
All the water and fire hydrants is there, and they have a roadway that's in. They probably need to do a little bit better job of maintaining it, but the fire department, along with Public Works, notified them that they needed to clear that roadway during the winter time, and so it's been accessible for us.
Yeah, because you don't want a fire truck stuck in the mud or something like that.
The Gunlock Development, which is the old Century Building, they have not submitted anything official yet. They were in for some preliminary discussions. We had conceptual discussions. They did a bunch of market research, so they had a bunch of people out doing research to determine what was going to work in this market. And I assume that they'll come back with some proposals that we have not seen yet. We know their team involves the Vogel Brothers as contractors, and the architect is the same architect that did this building. You remember what their names were, Vicki?
Potter Lawson.
Potter Lawson. So, they're the architect for the project. We have pretty... We're pretty much done with the LSL reporting. We just have to keep up with the ones that we end up replacing now as the percentage to make sure that we comply with that percentage replacement. Otherwise, we're pretty much out from underneath that consent order. Iridium is going to be coming up here shortly. We did an analysis of where new streetlights should go. I'll probably run that through the Public Works Board here, coming up shortly after Paul and I discuss it. Corrosion control, we're still testing, but nothing significant. No action on the water rate yet from the PSC.
Really?
We had a meeting scheduled to go over the wastewater treatment plant facilities for the report that we have to submit to the DNR to comply with our permit requirements, and that's been delayed because of the death of Judge Kiesling. So, we'll try and reschedule that. We received the final bill for the Brookstone subdivision work that we've done, so that's pretty much done. Betsy's prepared to send the special assessment notice out. We're still working on the design of Mud Lake Road, but they do have a set of preliminary plans in. Dwayne's been looking them over. They look pretty good, a few small items that we're probably going to have to resolve. The grades are much better. They're down to eights and...
Eight.
So, it's a much better design than what it originally was. We have a lot of dirt to lose, but that shouldn't be a problem. Collector relocate's still the same. We haven't done any business visits lately. We had a call with DOA regarding the use of the revolving loan fund for housing projects. And pretty comfortable with where we went. It is a possibility. We just have to put together a plan and get it approved.
Okay, that's good news.
We've been working on a standardized training plan for the city to incorporate into our handbook and make our handbook consistent. Still working on that right-of-way issue with the 1204 South Main Street. I have put together a schedule of fees. I had no idea how difficult this was going to be. But you will probably see a schedule of fees come forward that has all the existing fees on it that we have, what we're currently charging, and what we suggest to be charged, and all the related resolutions, ordinances, and where they're found in the code.
Wow, that does a lot of work.
Yeah. Mark Picard's helped a lot with that, so...
Oh, really? Well, that was nice.
TID number 5 and TID number 8 are on schedule to be going through the process in March. So, we'll probably have an Economic Development Committee meeting where we'll talk about it here shortly, and then it'll be on a schedule to be done in that timeline. And the final item is garbage. Any comments on how the garbage collection... The bulk garbage's collection has been going?
I haven't had anybody complain to me. And I haven't had any generally. My... What I have noticed is that there's less stuff on the curb. It, you know, for a while, there... It looked like we were having a citywide rummage sale every day, but that's definitely declined. And is it Brian who...
I believe that Brian has a lot to do with it.
Yeah.
You know, they moved the bulk collection from Monday to Thursday, and then what they did was they had their drivers take pictures, send it into their people, and then they noted where these bulk pickups were.
Oh, good.
So, that's why we saw it a lot. But Brian's also been out and noticing that, and then posting, giving them the ordinance and the requirements, and then what they're supposed to do. So, it's kind of cleaned it up a lot. Still get a few here and there, you know, people moving out or just put it out.
It's just going to take time to learn the change.
Yep.
And I think people will like it when they find out that they can do it any time, as long as they give advance notice, because it is much more convenient.
We had one that did it by email, and the email kind of got...
Oops.
...lost in a string of emails.
Uh-oh.
So, but Brian checked up, and I got it taken care of, so...
That's good.
Other than that, I don't have anything else. You have any?
Has the Kiesling family... Is there a time and place for a funeral?
I believe it's this Saturday at the Moravian Church. I can't give you the exact time, but I know the obituary...
9:00 AM is visitation, and then 11:00 is the service.
Yeah. The obituary's online on the Lake Mills.
It is now, because I had looked and didn't find anything.
It is now.
I just think, and I know Vicki worked with Bill extensively when she was city attorney, but I... Bill did... We don't even know how many years he served as...
Judge.
Judge, but it was a high number of years. And just wanted to recognize all the work he did for the city of Lake Mills since we're here tonight and know about it, but we will miss him.
Yeah, it said in the obituary that when he retired as judge in 2010, he was at that time the longest-serving municipal court judge in the state. I don't know if that still is the case, but at least it was back then. And at that time, I believe it was somewhere... It was more than 40, might have been about 45 years. So, he was one of our longest-serving of any kind of municipal official of anything, and I really enjoyed working with him. He was a great judge.
And a real asset to the city of Lake Mills. He served on committees as well, so... Thank you, Bill. Okay. My computer went to sleep. So, okay. We'll get it back up again. I guess your report was just too quiet for my computer here, so... There we go. All right. Item number 8, acceptance of minutes of the Police and Fire Commission of September 19th, 2019, Housing Authority of September 24th, 2019, and the Park Board of December 18th, 2019. And they have been received and will be placed on file. So, moves to council business. Item 8, discussion decision on the cantankerous agreement for additional environmental work. I really got a kick out of that item, it being a cantankerous agreement. It just did a strange picture in my mind, but all right. Would you read the motion, please?
City Council Motion 20-2-1-1, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement for engineering services for implementation of the vapor testing added to the aggressive metals remedial action plan.
Okay. Is there a motion? Someone want to make a motion to approve Motion 20-2-1-1?
I move approval of Motion 20-2-1-1.
Second.
Vicki?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch who had the second.
I don't care. One of them. Fight over, guys. Let's get those dukes up and...
Give it to Steve.
Okay. Discussion at this point. Steve, you want to just do a really brief explanation for the public?
Oh...
Isn't that possible? Isn't that possible?
I believe somewhere around 2008, 2010, we started doing environmental work at the sites here, which included CPN and aggressive metals. Actually, probably at the time it was originally started, it was all CPN.
This is, can you mention what location this?
621 East Lake Street.
Okay, thank you.
And I think this one, 629 East Lake Street, is actually the aggressive metals one. We did a Phase 1, a Phase 2, a Phase 3, a remedial action plan, and the implementation of the remedial action plan. And we received an initial notice from the DNR of completion and acceptance. Little did I know that actually, even though it received the acceptance letter, all projects go before a final review board in the DNR, and they can pull it back. The CPN site, which is the big block building to the west, 621, still was approved. But 629, there were some vapors in the building. They drill holes and they allow the vapor to come up, and they have a testing system there. And there were some vapors. They were borderline. One was high, but most of them were low. But at this point in time, the DNR pulled it back and said they wanted an additional three years of testing. So the project is kind of a continuation of the remedial action plan, which is how I viewed it. So the historic remediate, environmental work and remedial action plan had all been approved, so this is kind of like just saying, okay, we got a change order, let's go ahead, handle it. And so I bring it before you with the recommendation that we go ahead and finalize the project by approving this agreement to complete the work at aggressive metals.
Okay. If this was a new project, we, there would be more steps in the process, but we've already done most of the steps in the earlier part, right?
You know, I'm not gonna pretend like I really know. I don't remember what we did historically. I know that when we do the conceptual baselines for TIDS, we run them through the Economic Development Commission. But once we're actually into the project plans of them, I don't think we've actually run a lot of that back through the Economic Development Commission.
I don't think so.
And so this probably was not originally run through the Economic Development Commission. This has always been a council decision at this point. It's consistent with the project plan that was put forward by the TID plan. And although it's, the ultimate outcome is not consistent with it, because originally, we were looking at doing all this environmental work and then converting that area to residential's at this point in time. We have a lot of interest in converting CPN to residential, but not aggressive metals. But the project plan, as far as the work is concerned, is still consistent with the original intent of the TID, which is always doing a lot of environmental work to make the properties more attractive for reuse.
I read through all the documents that lay out roles and responsibilities for a couple of different commissions. And while there is some stuff in there that does really outline certain things should go to the EDC or to the Public Works Board, right now, there's, there isn't any language for anything dealing with spending the money in TIDS to go to the EDC, especially if we're, yeah, even if we're working on something inside the TID itself. And historically, I don't think we've ever sent anything to EDC when we're spending the money from the TID unless we're building something inside that TID. Am I correct in that?
Or if?
Even if we're building something, we haven't sent it to TID. Generally, what we do is we send, you know, we take a map and say, this is the TID that we're looking at, or this is the new industrial park that we're looking at, or, and then say, these are the concepts that are behind this, and what do you think? And these are kind of the project plans that would be developed in this, and what do you think? But when it actually, once that project plan was approved, we've never gone back and said, you know, we're doing all this work, this is how much it's gonna cost, what do you think? We've never done that.
Yeah, and I can see some of that, especially if you're doing Public Works Board-type work. I could see that going to them for approval.
And we have sent those types of projects to Public Works Board in the past.
Yep, and then the Planning Commission, if you're making changes to the TID. I'm just trying to see if there's any benefit in sending something like this back to the EDC. I just, based on the way the roles and responsibilities are written, there's really nothing in there that says we're supposed to send this type of stuff back. I mean, the Wisconsin Economic Development, was it Grants?
But the revolving.
Revolving loan funds.
Revolving loan funds, stuff like that, we're supposed to.
That, the EDC does have a hand in. And so that always went to the EDC.
Yeah, we've always taken that. The, if you want to send this back, I don't have any problem with this. It's not on a timeline. It's consistent with everything that would have been in the project plan. I shouldn't, I don't think it will be a big deal.
Yeah, I just, I'm trying to figure out, is there a benefit? What are we gonna get out of it from the EDC? What value could they truly put to whether or not we help a brownfield area?
Well, you're always looking for additional input into concepts, aren't you? I, this isn't, well, I don't consider this a concept that is.
No.
It is an expenditure.
It's something that the DNR is telling us we have to do, or somebody has to do it.
Somebody has to do it, right? Not necessarily us.
We have a motion, and we have a second. Is there any more discussion?
So in other words, we are assisting the private developers?
Yes. Well, these aren't developers. These are.
Owners.
Two owners who run a very small business that are encumbered with an environmental problem that's outside the scope of what they've ever done or known. And probably wouldn't have the wherewithal to be able to handle the cost of the project.
What happens with the testing if the results come back and we need further, more testing or remediation?
They would probably require some types of changes in the building if it came back and they weren't improving or getting worse. Probably an air changeover system. It's a pretty basic building. It historically started out as a metal pole barn. The brothers, Nick and Neil, have made a lot of improvements. They've sealed it up, made it so that they can heat it. They put in some large winches and things along that line. They do a lot of stainless steel work around the country, specialized, very specialized stainless steel work. They've built the tanks on our, they rebuilt the tanks on our back jet truck. They do a lot of work for a company out of Canada. So they, they, but they're very diverse and very specialized. They're not, they don't have one product that they just crank out. It's very, every day is a little bit different probably for them.
Is there a way that they could be special assessed over a time period to help offset some of the costs of that in the TID? So it doesn't look like they're getting a benefit of it without helping, I guess is the best way I would put it, because obviously, we would spend the money, and it would make their property more saleable, or whatever the case may be for them. They could probably get a better value on it if they sold it, because it was all taken care of.
We would, you know, in order to keep a business in the community, we would have, if it were vacant, we'd have done the work and just sold it as, for what we could get for it, because we wanted property to be reused. If I were looking at this and I were saying, what would be my highest goal here would be to buy the property from them, relocate them, and convert it to something else, even though we would lose substantially more money on the front end, in the long run, I think you're gonna get a better product.
I'm just looking at the way that we, you know, we say it's a safety thing, and we special assess folks for sidewalks. And, you know, it's not usually them getting the benefit of it. It's the rest of the community getting, community getting the benefit of it, but they're paying for it. So this is very similar circumstances where the owner would get the benefit of it, but the community would pay for it.
Technically, the community isn't paying for it. It's the TID that pays for it.
Yeah, I look at TID dollars as still part of the community. It's part of our community chest, one way or the, one way or another. Whether it's only associated to that TID and, what, a quarter mile out from it, it's still all part of the community's money.
Doesn't it help to get the property back on the tax rolls?
Well, it helps it to be utilized and keep it utilized that higher. Once you've made it, cleaned it up, it's got a better value, long-term value.
But it is on the tax rolls right now already, so.
But it would increase.
No, it would keep it from decreasing. If it became an environmental hazard through the, by not dealing with it, we would have a problem. The, the TID generates its own money. So if you're living outside that TID number three, you're not paying any of those dollars.
It's still the community money, though. It's still money that belongs to us as a community.
Okay, so you're looking at it from that perspective. I'm looking at it at who's paying for it, not who's benefiting from it.
Yeah, it's still community money. It's tax money that could have normally come back and been used instead of being set aside for just a TID.
Yeah, but you said, the TID was set aside for that reason, so you don't, that's the goal of the money there.
Sure.
I would, I would not look at it from that perspective. I mean, we've provided money to a lot bigger companies without any assessment.
Is this similar to the brownfields that we did with Walgreens?
Yes.
To clean up that site so that something could be developed?
Yes.
Yeah, well, look what happened there. We'd get sued every year.
But that's, that's a different issue.
Yeah, but still.
It's still better than the environmentally contaminated vacant gas station.
That's true, except for getting sued every year.
Right.
But totally different issues.
Okay, so is it the pleasure of the council to vote on this?
Well, so to go back to my question as far as remediation and so on, that's kind of an open book, or, but we don't know yet.
We don't know. That's why you're doing testing. That's why they put it on for three years. I, it's hard to know. I would, I would anticipate that it's not gonna be a long-term issue, but it's hard to say. Most of the environmental contamination on the site was slag from the welding. And so it's a very minor environmental contamination that has to do with that. This one site was very unique in that it was the area where they cleaned the stainless steel. So there were common chemicals used that we use every day to clean the stainless steel, but if it soaks into the ground, its chemical makeup changes. And that chemical makeup then changes to some chemicals that become an environmental hazard. And they create vapors and other things that we try and keep track of. So when you looked at the CPN site where it was slag, the gravel and some additional dirt covered it. At this site, we put down some asphalt. We put down a much thicker layer of gravel to help protect it. But where the existing building is, you know, there are cracks in the concrete, that solvent soaks through that, gets into the ground. And of course, that site was used for how many years. So it has some potential to be bleeding off for a while. And I think they just want to get a better feel for how heavy it's bleeding off. But I think at this point, I mean, that site's been not using those types of chemicals for years and years and years. Imagine it, it will be less, it will be decreasing as we test for the next three years, but I can't guarantee that. That's an assumption. I think that's the assumption that everybody's running on, that we work with on this project. But the DNR obviously felt that it was worth the additional effort, probably because it was that close to the
Okay, any other comments or? Let's call the question.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritch?
Aye.
Motion passed 5-0.
Okay, thank you. All right, that takes us to item B, discussion decision on the raise and removal of Sandy Beach Restaurant and Sandy Beach Mobile Home Park. Trailer 1A requests for proposed options. But would you read the motion as?
This one doesn't have a prepared motion.
I'm trying to get to that.
Hang on.
Let's go front. We have, okay, we just are in a discussion mode first.
Yes. I mean, you can make a decision on this, but there were so many options that I didn't want to spell it out in a motion. I just, you go through, Dwayne, I can tell you all the issues that are in there. You can decide if you want to make a decision on it or not. But all the areas that are in yellow are items that will probably be, I think there's another color in there too, aren't there, Dwayne?
Yeah, it's more of the green.
The green areas?
Just want to double-check a couple here.
So what do, what do you, we, what do we need to accomplish tonight at this meeting in order to stay on the timeline that is indicated?
There were, on page nine, there were a couple of green areas. And what you're looking at are, option one is to remove and dispose of the entire foundation and any and all masonry at both locations. Remove and dispose of the entire foundation and any and all masonry of Trailer 1. Remove the foundation of the Sandy Beach Restaurant building only to about one foot below final grade. So some of it has to do with cost. Go ahead, Dwayne, you tell me.
Sure. So some of it is to do with the removals and how, how deep we want to go into the foundation at this time in the removal. Let's talk just about the sandbar building first. It's a block foundation. Typically, we would probably take all of the foundation materials out. Typically, we would probably take all of the foundation materials out, completely remove it so that we would have a fresh, clean site. Some discussion internally has been, should we just take it down to a foot below existing grade and cover it with the intention that sometime in the future, there would be a further discussion on what would happen in that site. Then the questions that arose were, how do we leave the site once we've asked this contractor to take the building down and remove the foundation or a portion of the foundation? Do we want the contractor to just topsoil and seed and restore to a grassed area? Do we want to install, say, a 12-inch gravel base pad for some other use in the interim? Or a third option is add a base and some concrete for some other use that the council may decide to use? And so some of the questions we're bringing forward is really, how do we want to leave the site once the building is removed?
I personally can't see why we would want to pour concrete when we don't even know what's going to happen with the building. We haven't made any decisions, we haven't had a study on it. So I think that would be a waste of money, put concrete in.
I think so too. What?
The, the concrete pad discussion was, wasn't about the next building. The concrete pad discussion was about the temporary use.
Right.
What are you going to pull your food trucks onto? My preference was to pull them up along the fence here on the existing asphalt and just grass it, but you could put it on gravel or concrete or, um, and, and create an area there around that site that would then be used for food options. Uh, we have structured the, the RFP for the food trucks to allow multiple options and multiple, more than just food trucks, but trailers, concession, you know, small push stands and those types of things and, and see if they can structure something that, that covers a broader option of, of food types and, and options. And so the question is, is how are we going to utilize this area to provide that? Now, most of the week, I anticipate that we, we might see one food truck and cart. But on, on the weekends, and particularly on the busy weekends, I could see two food trucks and maybe several other types of food vendors on the site. So how are we going to accommodate them? That's basically what this comes down to. How are we going to accommodate them? I, I again go back to, um, I know that some of us have talked about it, but you know, the, when we take this building out, there's a gap in the fence. So we just have them pull up on the asphalt where that gap was and put in a, a low construction fence and let them pull up to that, have it grassed up to that. People then in their bare feet can walk up in the grass and up to the edge and order right off the truck. Of course, the other ones will be able to go down through the park on their, on the trails.
What about bringing in sand to continue the sand from the beach up to the thing rather than try to grow grass there? It's not a very good location.
If you look at it, everything from the, from the trail mark here, from this asphalt pad, back to the existing building.
Is that grass already?
That's, no, that's what I'm talking about. There's a, there's a asphalt trail right here.
Okay, yeah.
And from here back to the existing building is already grass. So we just continue to grass this area right here. The beach, you, you wouldn't want to extend the beach any further than this.
Okay, okay, I see what you're saying.
Couldn't you raise the building and restore it to a level surface and grass it? And then, once you get the food truck proposals in, then couldn't you do a change order at that time to nix the grass and put in gravel or nix the grass and do something else so that you can get things rolling without making a, a more or less semi-permanent decision because you don't know what you're going to do until you get your proposals in on food trucks?
You're going to, if you're going to put it, like Steve said, right there at that fence, invisible fence line right now because it's not there, then having grass right up to it wouldn't matter. You would never have to change it, especially if they're parked out on the parking, parking lot area there. You'd go with grass and you could just leave it grass until.
I think his comment is fine because it, it allows us, it, it makes sure that you understand that we could have another option if we needed to. But if you put it in originally as grass and we decide to stick with that, grass is great.
Yeah.
That's our best option. If we decide to come back, you know, and we, we'll have a change order, we'll, you know, that'll be a debate that we'll have as part of that review of the RFPs for food trucks.
So what was the thought about going down a foot? Do we think there's a lot of bad soil there or something like that?
No, just minimizing the, the disruption of the area. Although the area's been disrupted over the years, it's obviously has a building on it.
So you're thinking about going down one foot instead of four feet to take the foundation wall out?
Correct.
You got the equipment there already, it's not that much more just to pull it all out and you got a clean site?
Correct.
Yeah.
I would recommend that.
I would too.
Because otherwise, we're passing a problem on to a later council. And let's clean it up the way it should be cleaned up.
Yeah, you're already there, you got the expense of getting the equipment there and everything, it's not that much more.
Just do it, yeah.
And if we down the road, if somebody, probably might not be us, but decide to rebuild a building, they're going to need a new foundation anyway. You aren't going to build it on the foundation of the old sandbar. It's not going to be good enough.
And we would have to keep the records to say to that contractor that this foundation still exists.
Yeah, you're going to have to disclose all that, and that's going to be an adder for the extra construction down the road, so you're better off just cleaning it up.
So I'm also having a question in my head about trailer one. I just don't remember any conversations about this at all.
Before we do that, can we split this question maybe? Could we do?
I got one question on me.
Yeah.
I, I don't want to split the question, I'd rather answer it upfront and.
No, I'm just saying, do we need to do all of this in one motion?
Yes, I would prefer that at all.
All right.
It's one RFP.
I'm sorry, I just thought maybe it'd be cleaner.
We had a trailer that hasn't paid their lease payments in six, seven years, maybe longer than that. And we finally, we're talking to him about that, you know, if he didn't pay his lease, we were going to remove his trailer, and he said, "Go ahead." He says, "I've been trying to sell that sucker, I haven't been up there in 20 years."
They just abandoned it, basically.
So he said to us, he gave us the title, we said, "We'll give us the title and we'll get rid of it for you." So.
Okay.
We had it inspected with the other, with the restaurant, and we're in the process of saying, "Hey, put them together, gets us a better deal, get it out of there, and we've got another open spot." This is about the, this isn't the first one that we've done this with either. I mean, we've done this maybe three times now?
I only recall one time, but maybe we did more after I left.
So it's, it's been a, it's not something that's, I imagine that will do more as people start to come forward with realizing. One person that we did, he hadn't really abandoned us. I think what we found is, is that, um, and, and this is the second one that we've had that's been abandoned. And yes, it probably was done since you were there. And I think we just picked it up and sent it to the yard, if I remember correctly. But I think we're going to find a couple more of these as we go through the site that they're, they're, um, haven't been used for a long time, they've been paying their lease or they've been paying their lease without, and would really prefer not to, and so I think when we get down to it, we're going to find that people, there aren't as many trailers actually being used in there as there are trailers.
So the plan for that is just remove it and?
Cover it up.
Obviously, yeah, not let anybody else use that lot for any reason.
It's a very small lot.
I got one question on the, you know, putting on the grass seed, you said in the proposal, rough and tough 100. What's rough and tough about it?
It's a, it's the name of the seed spec that Rob uses in the perks department.
Is it tougher than Kentucky blue?
It was, it was a recommendation from Rob, I can't speak to, it's a material he uses and he, he was recommending, so we've included it in the spec. I can't say to compare it to another type of seed because I can't say that I've worked with.
And the pen mulch, do you know what that is?
Again, it's a, it's a spec for the covering mulch over the fresh seed that Rob uses and, and.
My, my only concern is that as the pedestrian craft, traffic goes up to the food stands that they wear, they'll wear it down.
I, I would, Rob and I have been talking that we are going to ask the contractor in the spec to fence this area off to the point where the grass is stable enough to have foot traffic. So actually, early in the season, there's a potential that this area will continue to be fenced off until the grass is stable and that mulch is gone. So we may have to incorporate into the RFP for the food trucks, a possible side location for the interim.
Yeah.
Until this grass is, is stable enough to take that kind of foot traffic.
I was going to ask, is when do you propose having the food truck start out there and when is the constr- this construction or demolition going to begin? Just for kind of having a plan B for the food trucks if that overlaps.
So the current timeline in the, in this RFP that we're showing for the demolition would be an opening in, in mid-March, come before the council on the 17th of March. The timeframe for the demolition would probably, I believe it, we have a date of June is, pardon me, it's the week before, it's the Friday before, the Friday of Memorial Day.
Okay. So you're shooting that May, that May deadline?
And so that May, I think it's the 15th approximately, so on the 15th, we would see this area seeded, mulched, and fenced in preparation of the Memorial Day weekend. Then the RFP for.
We've structured it on one year, starting on May 1st.
Okay. So you might have to just improvise for first month or two?
Right. We, the reason we did that was because, um, wasn't necessarily because we thought about it a lot. Like always, we, there were about 30 RFPs that I pulled together from other places and picked one and used that one. And it, it had a, that kind of deadline. And so I just didn't think much about it. I sent it to Dan, he's reviewed it, so we're going to get together and get it ready for the next council meeting, we weren't that far along really.
So I guess you just need to know from us which way we'd like you to get those RFPs ready. And I'm thinking.
Yeah.
Well, at least the consensus is to remove all the foundation stuff fully and then seed it.
And fence it. Do we need a motion to do that to, in what we're, what we're saying right now?
Yeah, you need to state a motion.
You want to use that as a motion?
Sure, I'll make the motion that we use option one to remove and dispose of the entire foundation and all that masonry on both locations. And then to finish it with grass seed.
Which would be option one on the.
Option one, yep. So both option ones.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Now we're open for discussion on the motion. Does anybody have anything in addition to that that they'd like to say before we vote?
Does that cover everything that you needed, Dwayne?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, call the roll.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Okay, there we go. Item C, 9C, resolution 20 dash seven. Would you read that?
Resolution 20 dash 07, resolution declaring official intent to reimburse expenditures from proceeds of borrowing.
Need a motion and a second for resolution 20 dash seven.
I move adoption of resolution 20 dash seven.
Second.
You want to just tell us a little bit about it?
This is a resolution that we typically do when we're going to be borrowing in the year. We're required to declare that we will be using our funds that we have available until we receive our borrowed funds. This is a requirement of the U.S. Department of Treasury. Our bond people will be asking me for this resolution to make sure that we've done this. And you have on the attachment a listing of our capital items that we intend to borrow for. So I've included everything, this may not be our final, we're going to, I'm thinking this is higher than we will probably be borrowing, so I wanted to include everything.
Otherwise, you'd have to come back and get us to do it again.
Right, I'd rather say that we could have the opportunity to borrow this much, but we don't expect we're going to have that much.
One de, a little detail. What, what does the initials EOC equipment stand for?
Emergency Operations.
Senator.
Oh.
We, we have three of them, one in the fire department, one downstairs, and one in Light and Water Building. And we've up, last year, we updated the fire department one, this year, we're updating the one downstairs, and then we'll come back and update the one in the, um, Light and Water Building.
Are they all interconnected so they could be all operating at the same time and communicating with each other?
Yes, we would, I don't think we would do that. The reason that we have three of them is sometimes the, the operations require more than, than we can get in downstairs, so we like to use the fire department. There are certain conditions where if the fire department or the, is down, it's quite possible that this one will be down, so then we have the light and water one. So it gives us a, a variety of options to be able to say, you know, when we had the school event here, we used downstairs. If we had had to expand our operations, we wouldn't have had enough room here. So we probably would have moved to the fire department, but there, there are certain occasions even in that one where some of the debate was is, under certain conditions, you're not always going to want to use the same evacuation sites for the kids, so maybe that there are other options, maybe this is an option and that one's an option, and so you're going to want to set your emergency operations center up at another, you know, at the Light and Water Building or things along that line. So we're, we're trying to keep ourselves as, as flexible as possible and be prepared for an emergency.
But if you had an emergency that was so big and broad-based that you had to use two of them at the same time?
We could.
They could do that?
Yep. They're all, from a technology standpoint, we're all buying the same equipment from the same vendor as the county, so that countywide, we're all on the same equipment and the same vendors, and so we can communicate across the board. I think even like those EMS is included in that. And so it, it tries to make us a countywide. So it, it tries to make us a countywide, consistent emergency response organization. The county actually writes the RFPs, gets the, goes through the contract expenditures. Now, we did the fire department through our own, but it was under the same concept. And hopefully this year, the county will be up and running and we can use them because they, they have a good purchasing agreement. And if we're doing it countywide, it should give us a better option.
Well, it looks like it's all in good order. Any other questions for Betsy? Seeing none, call the roll, please.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Okay. And that takes us to 9D, resolution 20 dash eight. When you're done with your paper writing stuff there, would you read that resolution?
Resolution 20 dash eight, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement between the city of Lake Mills and Jefferson County.
Is this a yearly event?
Every year, usually a lot earlier than this.
So it's a little bit like housekeeping stuff?
It allows the county to pay us $127,000.
Well, this is a really good motion.
This is a really good motion.
A good, good resolution. Okay, I need to.
Should have been done.
Okay, Doug will make the motion since it's such a good resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 20 dash.
Second.
I just realized that it's not on the written.
I was going to say, I didn't see it on there either. It's not in the right order.
I applaud it. This, the agenda was amended?
Twice.
Twice, and the second time was to include that. So it is.
Okay.
It is on line as the amended agenda.
And it was, I posted it.
Posted at the library?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah, and outside here. And I have a copy with it printed on it, so.
Perfect.
That explains why when I prepared yesterday, I don't remember reading about this.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, well, it was a surprise to all of us.
Yeah.
Luckily, yeah, was there a timeline involved here that we're lucky we hit?
Uh, no.
No, okay.
There is a timeline and we're not lucky because we didn't hit it.
Oh, no.
So we're going to beg for mercy.
Oh, okay. All right. Any questions, comments from the council? Seeing none, call the roll.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
We've got Gerard too busy with plans for advance, changing the library. He forgot about this. That takes us to item E, ordinance that we are on the third reading of. Ta-da. Would you read what we need to read for tonight?
Ordinance 1210, amending city code chapter 279, building construction, article three, electrical code, section 279 dash 34, adoption of code standards.
We don't have any other changes that need to be made, to our knowledge. So I need a motion to approve this ordinance.
I'll move to approve ordinance 1210.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion for changes? Seeing none, going once, going twice, call the roll.
Mrs. Fritsch?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Fritsch?
Aye.
Ms. Schmidt?
Aye.
Mr. Fields?
Aye.
Motion passed five zero.
Okay. So we're done with the electrical code and it's ready to go. Recommendations for future agendas? We did say we have.
RFP for the food trucks?
Right.
We also have, we'll also see the, um, construction plans for Grandma subdivision, Tyree Unapoint. They'll be at public works for this coming week and then the week after, we'll be at council.
Can you tell us again when that meeting on the south end of town on, on the, on the highway is going to be?
February 26 in the community center from 4:30 to.
I think you said 6:30.
It's two.
5:30 to 6:30.
It's 5:30 to 6:30.
Oh, 5:30 to 6:30, not 4:30.
I, the exact time I'm not going to, because the original email said 5:30 to 6:30, the one I got the other day said 4:30 to 6:30.
They have the, the room reserved from 4:30 on and they'll be available from what I understand, but there will be a formal presentation from 5:30 to 6:30. That's the way I understand it.
That's good. That makes more sense. 4:30 is awful early for people to come from work. So, all right. And, um, so, does anybody else have any other item of business? Seeing none, meeting is adjourned.